All right, number three, request for East Main Street to come one way. Director of Planning and Zoning, and do we have anyone here to speak?
Yes, Jeremy.
Just Jeremy?
Yes, sir. So, the planning commission put together this report. I'll put it together based on their input. We've worked on a cost estimate. It's gonna be around $11,175. As the low cost for basically restriping and resigning Main Street, if we want that route. The planning commission kind of dissected this into two main areas. They wanted to look at the public safety standpoint and also the level of public support. Robert McDougall was at the first planning commission work session, I think that was three. And during that meeting, he said he was working on putting together some petitions and information just to demonstrate the level of support in the community. I know that a few people came to council and initiated this, and he was gonna document that and show that it wasn't just a few people, it was really the majority of the downtown. However, that never came to light. I think we had a couple of work sessions following that, and a couple of months passed, and he said he was unable to obtain that information. So, I think that was a little telling to the planning commissioners that maybe there's not that much public support for the project. The planning commission also advised staff to discuss the project with VDOT and the Regional Commission and get some advice and recommendations. The Regional Commission reviewed it, they pointed out some concerns of the width of the street. It does not meet the minimum specifications for head-in parking, about two feet short. Generally, there's about 30 feet of travel wave between curb to curb, and the minimum specifications requires 32 feet and 1 inch. I'd say you could've do it, but it would not be meeting the safety specifications. They also recommended back-end parking be considered because we could meet the width requirements for that. However, the planning commission wasn't too fond on that idea. That would be where you would pull up and then back into the space. And in reading about that in other communities, it often creates a lot of confusion. You'll go in the wrong way because the spaces are aligned differently. We also submitted it to VDOT, and they did not want to provide any comments on it, other than they said the traffic study needed to be done. They would recommend one that would cost generally between $9,000 and $10,000, take about six months, and it would identify any off-site mitigation efforts that would have to be made to adjust to the traffic diversion of the rerouting of traffic. And so, that's where we left with the planning commission, gathered the report, and were back to council to see how you wanted to proceed with it. Yes, sir.
Let me grab Morrison first.
Oh, okay. He just looked at the point.
That's Martin.
Jeremy, I got one question for you.
Yes, sir.
So, is it fair to say that the lack of support is due to the lack of turnout? You said that we don't have public support.
The planning commission spent a good bit of time talking about how we could kind of reach out and get public input, but they didn't want to do that without coming back to council, because we didn't know if you wanted to proceed or not. The level, lack of public support we're seeing so far is certainly because Robert McDougall, who was representing the citizens that came to you, wasn't unable to provide us with any documentation like he said he would on support, written support from people in the community, primarily the property owners.
Was unable or didn't provide to?
He wasn't. He said he was unable to. I don't know exactly what that means.
Can you say that again?
He said he was unable to provide that input.
So, I'm gonna just piggyback on my own question here. The public engagement that you're planning on, engaging, what is that gonna look like with that? What does that mean? You need to find public engagement. Are you talking about a survey?
The surveys, yeah. The planning commission felt that if we proceeded, they would wanna have some outreach to the property owners, just one analysis, and then also the general public as another analysis, so that could be two targeted surveys.
Okay. All right. I ask these questions because this is all, it's just a bit confusing to me, because when Rob first brought it up, he brought it up under the impression, at least the impression made to me, that the business owners on Main Street were for it, a majority. And then to not generate support when the support seemed to already be there, I'm wondering where's the disconnect? And you're telling me that this is gonna end up?
Yeah, I spoke to him several times during the couple of months, the planning commission. I was reviewing it with him, and he was working on it, and he said he was unable to get that information.
All right. So, in closing, it's safe to say that the planning commission wants our blessing to continue to dig and give a more robust report to come back with, in terms of support, in terms of buying? Is that fair? We're not done here with the planning commission's piece?
I think their opinion is, let's not jump into it. There's still a little homework that needs to be done, namely, what's in the report, the traffic analysis and the surveys, if that's what council wants to proceed.
Gene?
I'll give you a little bit of information on that. In 1985, we got a block rent and did Main Street, Uzivo, all that area. And before that, when I came here in '74, it was one-way, and then we changed it to two-way, and then we changed it back to one-way. And then we changed it back in '85 to two ways. And the main reason that that was done is because there's no crossover streets. The only ones you got is Second Street and South Street. There's no other crossover streets that you can come directly through that are wide enough for traffic to, you know, get across from the bypass, over to North or South, depending which way you go. Now, there's roads that you can wind around and get over there, but that was the main reason that we switched it back from the one-way back to the two-way, mainly due to the fact that people complaining that there was no way to get over to North Royal. For instance, if you wanted to go, at that time, we had it north, east-west one time, then we changed it up to west-east. And the people on this side of town was okay with it going this way. If these people wanted to go to the funeral, or at that time, the police department, and everybody raised cane, you go, but there's no way to get there unless you went all the way up to South Street, or all the way down to Second Street or Third, to get back to North Royal, or South Royal, depending on which way. And so, in 1985, when the town agreed to do the block rent, which we got by the report, then they decided that that's why we did the bump outs, so it could be a two-way grid, and that way you had bump outs, and you had enough depth there to do it. We even discussed the angled parking, and it's right back to what you said earlier. It doesn't meet state specs as far as the safety realm. So, that's why it was done in 1985 when I was the engineer of all that stuff.
Phil? Got any?
I had several notes on this thing, since I helped Mr. McDougall champion this thing. Your report did not include the width of the street. And I question why was that? That's valid information, should've been in this report to make a recommendation one way or the other, because I didn't know about 32 feet or whatever the magic number was you said. The other thing I disagree with is how do ideas occur unless somebody presents a point of view? And that's why I was presented to the planning commission. Second one, going to the group that studies such matters, which is why we recommended go there, and do we have any traffic studies on Main Street? I agree with the public input is needed, and I like the recommendations that he came Gene, I got some concerns, or Mr. Tewol, has some real concerns about, we have possibility of three restaurants coming in this downtown area. And we provided a whole lot of dollars into providing parking on either side of Main Street over the years. This increased restaurants is going to increase foot traffic and auto traffic. There's a whole lot of, and I kinda, I took position with the NSVRC board person, his comment, I didn't think that was appropriate comment. Are bicycles responsible for the same laws as all moving vehicles? Question mark. Comment may not be of merit to one-way. My personal observation would probably go to what Mr. Tewol said. Traffic coming off Commerce up Main Street, and they use Main Street to get to the housing development over here on the west end of Main. So, I have noted that in my travels. As far as the recommendation, I like these recommendations coming off the board or the commission, and I think we ought to pursue it just a little bit further with these restaurants and everything that's growing down here. We're seeing some growth now. So, we do have traffic studies on Main Street. All that ought to be provided and taken a strong look at. But I did have some real position with that comment you made about the width of the street was not in here.
The width is on the plan, it's 30 feet. And the information about the ITE standard of 32, 32 feet, 1 inch, just came in, so it didn't make the jump.
Let me catch Mr. Meza next to you. Go ahead, Mr. Meza.
I have 10 questions, so.
All right, go ahead.
Couple of clarifying comments, Jeremy. So, head-in parking, you're making, you're saying that there's a recommendation of having a clearance of at least 20 feet? Is that correct? 25 feet is what you're recommending. Is head-in parking the same as angled parking, or is that two different things?
Head-in parking would be anywhere from 45 degrees to just less than 90 degrees, where you'd pull directly in.
So, you could-
Do you like the plan that's illustrated on it? That's based on a 45-degree angle?
That's what I was trying to understand. Okay, so that was based on a 45-degree angle with a 15-foot clearance? Is that correct?
15 foot for the parking and 15 feet for the clearance, the travel lane.
With the 30 feet. So, that's 15 feet clearance, which is sufficient to, for one-way traffic flow, is not sufficient, according to, well, I don't know, according to, but not your recommendation, as far as making it a loading and unloading zone, right? So-
Difference, car loading zone, difference.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand. So, it's safe enough for a vehicle to go through a one-way street, but it's not recommended as safe if we're gonna allow loading and unloading? Is that the point you're trying to make with that? Or am I messing that up?
Well, the 15 feet and the 15 feet, which is what it is today, that does meet the town standards, but when you look under the Institute of Transportation Engineer standards, which is what VDOT uses, we were informed that their minimum recommended is 32 feet, 1 inches. And that's based on a parking stall depth of 17 feet, 8 inches, a travel lane of 12 feet, 8 inches. And then what we, where we're really short would be the overhang to the curb, so when you have the vehicles, unless you put wheel stops in, the vehicles are going to come in and they're gonna take up half of the sidewalk. So, I think we'd have to put wheel stops in there, and that's reducing our width.
So, the diagram that you shared is without, without wheel stops?
What?
The diagram you shared is without wheel stops?
Correct.
Where you have 15 feet to do a wheel stop, 15 feet of clearance to play with, with a wheel stop, correct?
Correct.
With angled parking? Is that sufficient? 15 feet sufficient to do a wheel stop and have-
When you add up all the numbers, the travel lane, the overhang, past the wheel stop-
Without, without the traveling? Well, I know you can't do it without the traveling, because they can't hang out with the traveling. But I'm trying to understand, 15 feet, so just in simple terms, 15 feet seems like a lot of space for a car to park and still have clearance. So, I'm trying to understand, with the wheel stop there, what is the clearance that you need for, to make sure that that car is in place? Is that what you're saying, is two feet off?
You need 1 foot, 9 inches for the overhang clearance past the wheel stop, and you need 17 feet, 8 inches to meet the minimum specs for the parking stall. Our town code requirement is, the standard parking spaces are between 8 and 10 feet in width, and 18 foot to 20 foot long.
You just, just as a point of reference, like a Ford F-150 is more than 15 feet long, depending on the configuration.
Yeah, or a Suburban.
But we don't have 15, what's our parking space now? They're not 15 feet long?
The ones that are on the street now, they might be a little wider than-
Parallel, parallel.
Okay.
It's bigger than you think.
Right. So, okay, so those are 18, so that helps me understand. So, it's not a matter, so currently, if we did the 45-degree angles, it's possible to do, it's in our town code that we can do it that way. It's just not what VDOT's recommending. Is that correct?
It doesn't meet VDOT specifications, and so, I think that puts more emphasis on wanting to make sure we do our due diligence on this public safety before we do it, to make sure we're not liable for damages.
I'm sort of confused.
Okay. So, all right, so that's fine. I'll keep going, add a couple more comments on this, too. The, the public support section in here, I appreciate that somebody was, a particular citizen was championing the cause for public support, but I think that my challenge to the planning commission would be that we don't, we don't put on the one person, that since that person didn't deliver on what they were looking for, that means the public support isn't there. I think that it's the planning commission's job to evaluate all standards, or, you know, the cost evaluation of public safety, public support, and feasibility. So, in my opinion, it's not sufficient to just say that Rob McDougall didn't turn out what he thought he was gonna turn out, so therefore, there's no public support. To Councilman Tewol's comment about how we've switched the lanes from one-way to two-lanes, one of the reasons that got me interested in this was more than just having a pass-through street to connect Commerce, or basically to connect the bypasses to each other, is that, you know, our Main Street has been dying over the years. It hasn't been, it hasn't been growing, and it started to in recent years. But one of the questions that's been out there is, if it were to be one lane, and if there was more parking, would it help to create a little bit more momentum in the revitalization of Main Street? And that's the part that I'm really interested in, because I really don't know, is, you know, one-way traffic, there are not just people cutting through, if people would be more apt to, you know, walk down Main Street, or spend more time there, or have more parking for restaurants. And so, I wanna, wanna kind of throw that out, there's a bit of a note that, you know, changing from two-lane to one lane might have other desired outcomes from certain members on council, when other members are looking at it as, you know, slowing down Main Street and giving people more of an opportunity to be on Main Street and not just use it as a pass-through street. And I think that that's gonna, the way we define that's really unclear, design how we go forward on this, too. Because I would agree with you that without that, there isn't gonna be an easy pass-through on Main Street. The cost evaluation, is this real cost as far as materials and labor, like for instance, a line painting of $7,500? Or do we have the ability to do it cheaper because that's our in-house crew, our in-house staff, or is this something we're gonna be outsourcing for people to strike? I know that we've made, you know, some concessions like that with the county, and our actual cost versus what it really costs when we did lighting on the skyline, or the soccerplex. And I'm just curious if this is the actual cost, or if we, somebody were to be, you know, asking us to do something, then this is what we charge them like a business?
So, that was based on public works' unit measurements, which is based off of what we're doing, cost us if we put it out to contract and had a contractor do it.
Okay.
And I added a contingency to that.
So, is it possible that we could do it cheaper than $11,000 if we did it in-house?
Um, well, that's a-
Wouldn't be, it'd just be kind of, it'd take us longer. We could do it, but commized, we wouldn't get it done as fast.
What's that mean, like?
It's a two-man crew.
Yeah, for, how many spots are here? 30?
We gained about 11 spots.
38.
30 spots?
38.
Okay.
Is that what we gained?
We gained 14.
14.
So, it is possible to do cheaper than $11,000, so I was gonna add. Can you guys, sorry, now I'm asking. Can you guys put in the, what'd you call them?
Wheel stops.
Wheel stops as well?
Okay.
Okay. So, the next time that this comes back, is it possible to find out what our actual costs would be versus if we were to put this out to bid, so we know what we're actually spending as a, or we could actually spend as a town if it's possible to even do that way?
Sure. John?
So, Jeremy, I want to thank you for bringing this back to us. I know we, we pushed this over to the planning commission just to see what the thought was. If, if we're looking for feedback right now as to whether or not we're ready to move forward right now, I'd say not. I also think that we have plenty of work for the planning commission to do, without putting the planning commission in charge of drumming up or finding the public support for project. That was brought to council, and council just wanted their evaluation on, recommendation on. From me, right now, I think that this orientation for Main Street would probably do just as much harm as it does good, as far as growing our Main Street right now. I know that it would prevent me from using Main Street, because I live on the east side of town, it's going against the grain of the traffic. And as I said when this first came before council, I'm deeply concerned about the impact that it's going to have on the other side streets, on Peyton Street in particular, which is going to be seeing additional traffic now with additional loading going on back there. Because we're seeing growth, because we're seeing good businesses come in and locate on Main Street, that's gonna lead to, I'm pretty sure, if we have to turn Peyton to one-way or try to keep a two-way configuration with all the traffic that we're experiencing from Main Street. As things stand right now, I haven't yet seen a compelling reason for us to commission a six-month-long traffic study either, that would cost $10,000. And I'd be content to let it alone if it were up to me.
Gary? You have any sense? Okay, let's go back to Gene.
Well, there's two, two things I need to, I'd like to ask. First thing is, has, has the police department been involved in any of this negotiation? Because I think, you know, the police department has gotta be in certain places at certain times. If you get a call on the east end of town and vice versa, the west end now, that's gonna kill them getting back and forth from place to place without the true traffic on Main Street. Because I know that you, because I see them a lot of times on Main Street going back and forth today. The second thing, going back to the traffic study, Jimmy, do we still have those traffic counters that we used to have?
We have some new ones, but they haven't been used for a year or so. I have to see if they're up.
Before, we had traffic counters, we could tell you how many cars was up and down Main Street prevailing, and instead of doing a full-fledged study, as John referred to a few minutes ago, and you did, then if you could put those traffic counters out, at least they'd give you a number of vehicles per day going east and west. And that would give you then more of an idea as to how much traffic is going in one direction or the other, which would help me to make a decision on which way I would like to see going east or west. Because to me, the traffic counters tells you these issues that we've been talking about tonight. Right now, we don't have a clue who goes east or who goes west on Main Street. And so, and again, going back to what John just stated, you know, it's gonna have a big impact, and I do, too. When I was here and saw it originally, it did have a bad impact for the council and the town when we made it one-way.
What was the bad impact now?
Because you had people on this side of town got upset because it's going in the wrong direction. And the people on the other side of town go, that's that way, it's going the opposite direction. And so, when we did it in 1985, when we did the block rent, council at that time agreed to make it two-lanes, and that way, they didn't have the conflict between the citizenry getting back and forth to wherever they wanted to go.
Phil?
I think this, as Mr. Meza said, to put it on one constituent, didn't, because when he approached us, he was coming forth with an idea based on two other people that was putting millions of dollars into this Main Street, and it was kind of their idea. And the facts that you presented tonight are missing in this report, and all of that has a lot of bearing on what we're doing here. And one time or other, this street was one-way. So, you know, that's why I'm confused. It went both one-way, east, west, or west-east, at one time or other?
Both ways. We did it east to west, and we did it west-east. And that's after all the rigmarole we had, that time, the council then decided that we created a problem on either side, they decided to leave it two-lanes in 1985, when we, we got the block rent, and what we have today is what we put in in '85.
I've also been observing when I walk Main Street and try to watch people parallel parking. I'm strange on how to parallel park. There's a lot of people in this community do not know how to parallel park, how to pull in and then try to square it up.
Dave?
Just two quick comments, the, to Councilman Conley's point about garnering public support and asking the planning commission to do that now, I agree, I agree with him. My comment was more that, in my opinion, these are briefs or summaries that you give us that help influence a decision from us of which way we want to go. And that's why I was asking more, asking for more of a critical analysis than just the section that you, you titled as public support, or if there was other options related to cost evaluation. And we, I also think we kind of need to define what is, you made the comment about not making a recommendation to jump into this and do it, and I don't think anybody wants to do it tomorrow. But jumping into it, I do think it's been with planning commission for a while, I don't think we're jumping into it. I think that, you know, there's opportunity to, you know, especially if we have a history in the town of how this has already been done before, to kind of wrap that in there to our informational piece or the brief on what we're reading, so we can make an informed decision here. And that was really my comment about the public support, but I do agree with Councilman Conley that don't necessarily need to do that now until we know if it's feasible.
I'm not saying we need to have, to put the burden on one person or three people to demonstrate public support. I'm saying if the public support were there, I'm pretty sure we know about it, because the people in this town are not shy about letting council know how they feel when they feel strongly about something. I think we need a reason to change a configuration that's in place and that is working, and I haven't seen a compelling reason yet. I've seen, I've seen one presentation from a very small group of people saying, we think it would work better this way, but not having looked at any of the side streets, or any of the impact that's been having to the town as a whole. And I would, I just want to urge caution before we start throwing funding at all of the preliminary work for this, to make a change that maybe we don't even want, that maybe our people don't even want. Because honestly, I, if it were something that people were clamoring for, I think they would've shown up to the planning commission meetings, generally, when people feel strongly they're there.
And I think that after a certain period of time, people get deflated because they believe that nothing's ever gonna change, and so they don't come out and support it. So, I think we've seen that time and time again here, and that's, that's what I'm commenting on as far as the timeframe.
We got one last comment.
Sure, go ahead.
When I was on EDA board, we paid tens of thousands of dollars for road studies, and I have yet to see one of those show up unless I verbally ask for it. You know, if these road studies were here for Main Street- You know, if these road studies were here for Main Street, you know, I'd like to have seen this for backup. Not that we're going to make a decision, I'm not prompting them, we shouldn't push for this right now, but, you know, there's an issue with what's going on in this downtown we need to be aware of. If you've got three new restaurants coming in here, there's going to be some traffic down here. And I've watched them parallel park, and it is, it is a laugh. If you want some entertainment, just watch for a little while.
All right, got a question, Council. Everybody want to stall out for six months and kind of wait and see what's going on for the next six months, see how much public input's going to be out there? I mean, it's evident that one person, yes, came, brought the idea, there may be a great need and we need to do it, but it sounds like council's kind of divided down the center to...
There's more than one. I'm got with them and a restaurant down.
Oh, no, I'm just talking about Mr. Dugle.
There was five, count them.
Well, where do y'all want to take this to?
Well, you know, if you're going to, if you're really going to get the public involved, you're going to do something other than just talk about it. But you gotta, you want to put this little survey somewhere on the internet and let people comment about Main Street. I mean, I'm sure a lot of people will say. Or even put it, put something in Northern Virginia, then local papers, tell them the people, if they have problems or whatever, don't put one way or two ways, let them come back and respond to these questions. And if you want the public to give you an answer on something, it's not going to happen. I'm like Jake, it's not going to happen just us talking about it. You got to do something to generate it. And if there's some way we can generate it through either the internet or website, when I say the internet, the website that we have, you know, there's ways we can do that. I think that we, even the tourism can be a big thing in that. You could put something together and maybe put it out somehow. I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's...
No, what's your idea?
We've got so many problems already, we...
No, I mean, I agree. We can get a survey out and address, like the Planning Commission says, downtown as well as the whole citizens. We can work on that.
We have to be careful on the internet because you get a lot of trolls.
Right, but staff can get together, staff can get together, and we can get something wrong.
Maybe we did something similar, put out a survey in our electric bill? And maybe let's keep it local and, and let's do the electric bill. What do you think, Council?
I would like to hear, I would, so I feel like we can get easily scared off as soon as there's cost thrown around. I don't, I'm not advocating to do a VDOT study. I think that if this were ever to come to fruition and we were that serious and all of us were agreeing, hey, we're going to go forward with this, I think it's prudent to do the VDOT study and spend the money because we know we're all going that direction. But in the absence of that, I don't think it's prudent to spend the money. What I would like to know is, if this is our directive and we say this is something we're strongly interested in and we want to see if this is possible, I would like recommendations on how to make this happen and like, and show that this is possible. Not the ten ways or fifteen ways and why this isn't possible, but show us how this is possible. Tell us the real costs associated with that, and if it's something we want to move forward as a group, great. If it's something we don't, we don't. But I feel like it's, it's just, as soon as money's thrown out there and all the cons, it's really deflating and this just dies. And if you put it out six months, then you might as well just forget about it.
I just asked.
No, I know, I understand what you're saying.
Jean?
Well, you know, again, you know, we're, we're supposed to be safety conscious, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we just spent eighty, almost $100,000 on crosswalks, right? I don't want us to put something in Main, on Main Street that's going to be a safety problem, whether it's one inch or six inches or five feet. Because I think if you're going to find, if this is a technicality in, in the state law, as far as the state's saying this is the safety regs, then we need to make sure the safety regs are followed due to fact because if someone has an accident down there and it's not meeting state transportation safety codes, we could get sued because of that. So whatever we do there, make sure it's going to meet all specifications through the federal transportation or the state transportation, whoever, in that. Because we get money from the state, and some comes from the feds when we get our allocations for our streets. And so I don't, I don't want us to go down there and say, oh, just because somebody wants it, it doesn't meet safety, and we're going to do it anyway. I don't think that means safety, I don't say yes.
We could do that anyway. If it was against, if it's against safety, it doesn't have...
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what we just talked about, when you first said it didn't meet safety requirements.
So another question, Council?
Jeremy?
I have one suggestion, just to consider. As far as the big picture goes, we have, we already did a parking demand analysis as part of the 2016 project for the downtown revitalization. The next phase of that was going in and looking at how we're going to make improvements to the parking lot. And the main focus of that was the Jackson Street and trying to, you know, figure out what, how we can make that work to mirror Peyton Street over on Jackson Street and improve parking, rather than fourteen spaces, gain a hundred spaces. And what we could do is we could address it from the big picture and move forward with that project and include in that the possibility of looking at the one-way on Main Street.
The problem, yeah, we don't own the property, we have Jackson. We only own one section.
Yep, that's a challenge. That is a challenge.
Yes, you're right.
Joe, do you have any suggestions for us to take this to? I know we can do the survey. Jeremy can find out for safety, Jean's questions, if it can be done in accordance to our ordinance or law, state law, whatever. Is that correct, Jeremy? Anybody else need any questions answered?
It's not a state law, it's VDOT's standard.
Well, VDOT standard, yeah.
I'd like to check with what I mentioned a while ago about our traffic counts. I mean, we can do a traffic count analysis if we still have the equipment and still working.
You would move that one step further. I'd put it on the left side, I'd put it on the right side of Royal. I would know which way, or you, you could make the left lane here a counter and the right lane a counter. But you'd have to put one across the street to see how many are going actually west because we're actually talking about extending west Main Street, right? I mean, the counters are a good idea. I just, I know I, on EDA, I paid for a heck of a lot of traffic studies, especially South Street, and never saw one of them.
But could I just, you know, ask, Jeremy, can you let, y'all get it together and let us know if that's feasible to do the traffic counts?
How long do you leave them out?
I got to find the date and everything because the last time they were used has been a while back, so.
All right, see what you can find out and spot-check a few places every how many days. I don't know how many days VDOT leaves them out. Collect that information, but just kind of put it out in the Main Street, other than, wherever you can, wherever you can put them at. And we'll bring this back to Council at a later date.
Going back to your question, I was, I mean, after we get all the information from Jeremy and the things that we requested tonight, then it's going to take a probably month or two and then bring it back and let them present it back to us. So we know what we're looking at and then go from there. After the survey's done and all the other things, I don't have a lot to take. I think you need to give them enough time to make a, you know, response back, two or three months.
Well, the electric goes out in two cycles, Joe.
And I think you need to talk to the guy sitting over here, call the chief of police, and get some of his input on that because I think they, they play a big part in Royal, getting the cost down and do their caution.
Is there, is there a different requirement for parallel parking with spaces than the forty-five degree angled spaces? Not on this road, but just in general?
It's a place twenty feet, so the eighteen.
For parallel parking? That explains why it's so hard to park down there, parallel.
Get a small car.
Well, usually I just push the car behind me.
So these are, I mean, these are all standard, you know, so it doesn't mean we couldn't do it, it's just we're not going to meet that minimum safety standard.
We were going to get fourteen parking spaces.
Have it without any unloading and loading spots. If we put in the loading, we were going to decrease it down these spots.
It was, it wasn't very many then.
All right, well, Joe, we're going to...
I got my margin to take this.
And I don't think, sometimes Jake, that when you start talking about funds, you know, funds are available for a lot of things, and if this is something that council gets its feet in it and wants to go with it, then we can always find the funds. It's like studies. Jean and I hate studies. Spend a lot of money on studies, fifty, sixty, eighty thousand sometimes, but money is there sometimes for whatever we need.